Good evening, I'm Mayor Bill McCloud of Hoffman Estates and welcome to our virtual town hall meeting. We're talking with the nonprofits that serve Hoffman Estates and they can tell you a little bit about services they provide and how they're dealing with the very interesting times that we're going through here. Our host for this evening will be Dr. Audra Marx, who is the Assistant Director of our Health and Human Services Department and a licensed clinical psychologist and Director of Training for the Health and Human Services Department in the Village of Hoffman Estates. Our panelists include today Rebecca Dyer, who is the CEO of Wings Women in Need Growing Stronger, and they provide services to women, children, and men who are victims of domestic violence. Rebecca's done a great job of expanding Wings. They are in the city of Chicago now and we're very impressed with what she's been able to get done. Carrie Estrada is here also. She's the Assistant Director of Children's AFC Center and the Safe for the Start program. They provide services to children and families, victims of domestic violence, and she can tell you a little bit of what they do. Bruce Seewick is the CEO of SHARE, Leiden Family Services and Mental Health Center. They've been in Hoffman Estates since 1977. Don't let the Leiden Township thing mislead you. They've been here for a long time and they provide rehabilitation for people with drinking and gambling problems and drug problems. They do great work. We also have Nancy Gianni, the founder and CEO of the Gigi's Playhouse. Gigi started in Hoffman Estates 17 years ago and she's got, she'll soon be, soon be opening her 50th Gigi's Playhouse. They're located in both Hoffman, Hoffman Estates, United States, and Mexico, and she's done a wonderful job also. So at this point, I will turn this over to Dr. Audra Marx. Audra?
Wonderful. We're, we're very delighted to have each of you here this evening. Thank you so much for taking the time and thank you to our audience for being here. So I'll just tell you a little bit more about what we do here at Health and Human Services before we begin. As we all are focused on change and advocacy here, I just want you to know a little bit more about me and our program here. So as the mayor said, I am a licensed clinical psychologist. I've worked here at Health and Human Services for about four years now and our mission here at the Village of Hoffman Estates Health and Human Services is that we provide accessible and affordable physical and mental health services to those who may not otherwise have access to services. We have a strong emphasis on multicultural competence and humility as well as social justice through our outreach and training. So very happy to be here tonight. And just so you have an overview of what this evening will look like, in the beginning, I will ask our panelists to just tell us a little bit more about their mission and their services. I also will then have a few questions for them and then we'll address some action items for the community and for the audience, how can they help? And then we will take questions at the end for around the last 15 minutes. And if you do have a question, so this is to the audience, please post that question in the chat and then I will read that to the panelists. So for our questions this evening, what I can do is I'll ask the question and then if it's all right with you panelists, if I then say your name and then you can respond. Does that feel okay?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. So to begin, could I have each of you tell us a little bit more about your agency and the mission? So if I could start with Carrie, if you could tell us a bit more about the CAC?
I have a quick PowerPoint if that's okay?
Sure. That's wonderful.
Let me see if I could share my screen. Hold on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. So here's our CAC. Our main hub is in Hoffman Estates. Let me see if I could. Okay. And that is our mission statement there, serving as a leading resource to empower and heal the abused child and prevent violence against children. Essentially, what we do is we coordinate child abuse investigations. We provide services to 38 different communities. So from the Cook County side of Elgin, all the way to Evanston, if there's a disclosure of child abuse, they come to our center and then we are coordinating with the families between law enforcement, the Department of Children and Family Services, and the state's attorney's office. All of those services are offered free of charge and they are in English and in Spanish. Again, that is our main office in Hoffman Estates. We also have a satellite office in Evanston and Northbrook and also one in Streamwood. Child abuse is now a, or has been for quite some time, really a national epidemic. There are some stats in how prevalent this is in our communities. It affects all communities and it really impacts society as a whole as well. So in order to keep our community safe, addressing child abuse early would be incredibly helpful. Last year, we provided services to 1,200 children and families. So that's just in fiscal year 2019. We had done 926 of those abuse interviews. So that's how prevalent this is happening, just in the Northwest suburbs. We had an additional 350 kids participate in our therapy programs. And something important in order to understand CACs is to understand how this used to happen before CACs were a thing for the past 30 years or so. So when a child would make a disclosure of abuse, a lot of times that would happen at school and that child might tell a teacher. That teacher would then get the principal involved. The child would have to tell that story again. Then they might get a social worker involved. That child would tell that story again. The Department of Children and Family Services, the police departments, lawyers, so that child had to keep telling this horrific story. And that child's story, it was very traumatic to have to retell these, these horrible things that had happened to them. And it also was super unhelpful in gathering evidence against these perpetrators. You know, it's really hard to, to tell the same story, the exact same way multiple times like that, let alone something as traumatic as this. So that's when that task force was developed to bring CACs to life. And it was actually through the community, but as well as it was police departments that were noticing this. Hey, there has to be a better way to be gathering evidence because these bad guys, the perpetrators kept getting off. Because this was the system that we were working with. So today, when there's a disclosure of child abuse, and typically that hotline is called, so people are not supposed to be interrogating that child. And then the police or DCFS, depending on how that call comes in, they will make arrangements with our CAC if it's in one of those 38 different communities. And then that child comes to our main office in Hoffman Estates or in Northbrook, which it looks like a giant farmhouse. It is a giant farmhouse. So it's not intimidating, like if a child were to go to a police station and feel like they were being interrogated. The child comes to this home-like setting. They receive what's called a forensic interview and that's done by a specially trained interviewer who's asking questions in very developmentally appropriate ways and is very trauma-informed to make this child have, to really negate the traumatic experience of making this kind of disclosure. And then law enforcement, state's attorneys, and DCFS are able to consult about this case to figure out what is the next course of action. So that child is only telling that story one time. And it is videotaped so that if it has to go to the judge, that judge is able to look at this disclosure again, again, trying to mitigate the trauma that that child endures. So we have a CASI program that's court advocacy and sensitive interviewing. So the day of the family will meet with an advocate that will explain this whole process, what this is like, explain about the forensic interview, and then that child will sit for that forensic interview. And the advocate is really keeping that child, I mean, keeping the family up to date about what's happening in the court proceedings. Is this case going to go to court? The advocate is able to actually attend court with the family or with the child if the child does have to go. You know, this is a completely overwhelming situation for families to find themselves in. So to have a CAC advocate be able to help them navigate that, that beast of a system has been really, really helpful. And then a lot of those cases will then get referred for one of our therapy programs to help that family put all these pieces back together. So we have a family support service program in Evanston and in Streamwood. And they are seeing kids that are six to 18 years old doing trauma-informed services. They're all master level clinicians. Again, that's offered in English and in Spanish and is free to, to our families that need it. And then we have a Safe from the Start program, which is really, really unique in that it addresses trauma in our youngest victims of family violence. So you have to have a child birth to five years old to qualify you for that program. And then we'll treat any other siblings that have been impacted. So the majority of those kids have been exposed to domestic violence, but because it's the birth to five years old, which is a really underserved population, we're able to really right the ship at that earliest possible point. So we do a lot of work with the caregiver and how to repair the trauma that that young child has been exposed to. And then I think we could probably save those questions, but here is how to reach us if anyone were to, to need any of those services. I don't know if I know how to, okay.
Wonderful. Thank you, Carrie. That was so helpful. We really appreciate that. All right. So the next person on my screen here is Bruce. Could you tell us a little bit more about SHARE and Leiden Services?
Sure. What I would like to do is start off with a video. Make sure to get this going here. That will give you an idea. It's a five-minute short video. It's an overview of the agency, including the SHARE program. Then I have a PowerPoint that will familiarize you with, with the SHARE program. So this starts at the mental health portion in Franklin Park and ends up, the PowerPoints will be at the SHARE program in Hoffman Estates.
Leiden Family Service has been around for a long time and I'm glad to be a part of this community slash family.
It's more than just a career. It's, it's my vocation.
For me, this is a calling and it's an honor for me to work with such resilient, beautiful people.
Because everybody has a story. Everybody has a place here of this world and they do too.
I have OCD and bipolar. I've been here in Leiden for about five and a half years now.
My mom passed away. When she passed away, I just couldn't deal with it. I didn't grasp the thought that I'm only like 23 years old and I have to go up to this in my life without my mom. Started coming here. I was homeless for about 10 years.
My one sister passed away and a few years later, my mom passed away. So I'm honored that I had nowhere to live.
I couldn't do anything without drinking. I didn't go to the grocery store without drinking. I didn't, you know, I didn't mow the lawn. I didn't do the garden. I didn't do anything unless, you know, I drank alcohol.
And it just continued to get worse and worse and worse until I overdosed in June of 2013.
The fact that you hear Howard and a kid's name in the same sentence is just like getting a knife in the heart.
We had over 3,000 people at us wake. The funeral director was like, it was like a dignitary. People waited four or five hours to get in there. That's how many friends and people show up or they don't know who to go to. They don't know who to ask for help.
Change is possible.
Leiden is here to show them that there is other ways. There is, I get really emotional. Sorry. There is resources out there that they don't have to live uncomfortable the way that they are living, that there is help.
See them when they're at their worst and then we help them become to pick on their feet.
The coolest thing for us as counselors is to watch the physical transformation that clients go through. They come in pretty broken, pretty beat up from that to someone that's much more confident and hopeful when they're leaving treatment. It was, it was the greatest reward.
I always like to have that interaction with them and say, hi, how are you doing? You look so much better now. It's so good to see you smiling.
People see us as like a beacon of hope.
We provide a lot of services because we want to treat the whole person, not just one little part of the person.
I get to go home every day knowing that I'm working with people to make their lives better.
They feel loved. They feel safe. They feel like I'm wanted.
It's all about, you know, letting go and not being afraid or discover that none of those awful things you thought about yourself were true.
It's an opportunity for them to empower themselves. And I think that is so important for people to be able to assert themselves, ask for what they need. And a lot of our clients have really struggled with that.
They do care about your wellbeing. And today, that means a lot.
I've been cleaning out for about three years. If I can, I'll say that Leiden has helped me a lot, uplifted me and gave me the support I needed.
As far as Leiden goes, I get help from her. Talking number one is my therapist and she is not only a really awesome person, but she's a great therapist for me.
I feel wherever I am, I'm wonderful.
I'm a recovering alcoholic for 14 years and this is where I got sober. My son just got married less than a year ago and it was amazing to be there and to be sober. And he made a speech and, and it was thanking his mom.
The TLP program is a transitional living program and it happened to be in my apartment.
This is model three and I was in that bed over there.
SHARE does good work here. It, it does what it's supposed to do.
I have met like wonderful people here at SHARE, my friends that, you know, we send the meetings together. This journey is long and hard, but there are people to hold your hand through it.
Can you imagine holding hands with people around the entire world for, for one minute? What a wonderful experience. And that's what I did here.
I love everybody here. They're like my second family.
The whole is greater than the sum of the parts. And I think that's the magic that happens at the agency here. It's not just any individual and the skill set that they bring, but it's what happens when it all comes together at an agency like Leiden and SHARE.
So let me just switch to my PowerPoints. It's not very many. Just to... Can anybody see that?
It is often challenging, but we did think it was very important that you have this information. There's a silver lining to this. Typically, we would offer this to freshman parents when they drop their students off because they're here and we would do it in person. But I think in this format, hopefully there are a number of upper-class parents who've chosen to join us as well because we continue to evolve within our department. There's just lots of exciting stuff happening certainly within our department and elsewhere on campus. And so I think the opportunity to hear about that, I hope was a valuable one for you. As everyone on this call has said, if you have questions that come to you later, if there's more support that you need or that you know your student athlete needs.
I think it is, I want to look you for a second. Yeah. I think it's on your computer.
We very much value that you would trust us.
Did you find it yet, Bruce?
While they're with us during their time at Homewood and certainly they're with us now. It's not directly on campus, but they are a blue jay. It probably just started playing the next video that was coming after your other one. Go back to that screen.
Okay, I think you got it.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Great. Thanks.
So can everybody see this or not? Probably not, right?
Not yet.
All right, let me get it. And let's give my apologies.
It's okay.
Okay, so Leiden Family Service and the SHARE program, kind of our management team. Jill Delarco is the Director of the SHARE program. We have a senior program, outpatient therapy. That's the video that we saw. Our mission is to... We're dedicated to excellence in providing constant mental health, substance abuse, and social support services that strengthen individuals, families, and the communities who provide these services with integrity, a caring spirit, and with respect to individual needs. So we believe, as I'm sure the rest of my colleagues believe, individuals have the right to self-determination. They deserve respect and a right to preservation of intrinsic self-worth and dignity. Individuals have an innate capacity for change, right to receive services in a non-judgmental setting. Individuals have the right to confidentiality and the right to have equal access to the type of service that best meets their needs. And they have the right to consistent, high-quality care at all levels. So I just want to, here's, here's a breakdown of our budget to give people an idea. This is kind of important. Fifty, 57% of our population is a Medicaid population, which I think many of you are familiar with. The state grants have been decreasing over the years, over the decades. Private insurance and self-pay fees is only 10% of our budget. Local townships only 6%. Foundations and grants 1% and other miscellaneous revenues 3% and cash contributions 1%. So I'm trying to change the mix there because it's, you can't just survive on the Medicaid dollars, which anybody has experienced with the managed care companies. It's, it's not the easiest thing to get money from them. So Jill is the Director. Her assistant is Joe Wilson. SHARE stands for Start Here Addiction, Rehabilitation and Education. As the mayor said, it was created in 1977 to treat those with substance abuse difficulties, both in inpatient and outpatient setting. We have medically monitored detox and a residential rehab substance abuse treatment. We have one female unit and two male units, one a medication-assisted treatment unit. We are DASSA licensed, JCO accredited, located in Hoffman Estates, serving 18 years and older males and female. We have to have a nurse, a registered nurse or a licensed nurse practitioner for 24 hours. The counseling staff are all either CADCs or clinically licensed. We have a psychiatrist present on a weekly basis. We're MISA capable, so we take dual diagnosis, but you have to be stable and with 30 days of medication. And the intake process now is, is open five days a week, but we were open seven. So our treatment consists of individual group counseling, educational lectures, life skills groups, family counseling and family education, relaxed prevention, education and planning, and then MISA groups for, for people with mental illness and substance abuse. As I said, psychiatrists, they're weekly, and crisis management planning is provided at discharge. We also, we also address HIV and infectious disease education. We have recreational therapy. We have a gym, which you saw in the video. On-site 12-step meetings daily, medication monitoring and continued care planning. We have intensive outpatient for those that don't meet the criteria for inpatient, three evenings a week for seven weeks, regular outpatient, two evenings a week for five, two evenings a week for five weeks, then aftercare twice a month. And we also have an outpatient gambling assessment and treatment program. So for further information, how you can help us, please visit our website and thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Bruce. That was really helpful. All right. Rebecca, could you tell us a bit more about Wings?
Yeah, so I had planned on doing this virtual town hall from my car because I had another meeting I was going to be going to. So I knew I would be able to show a PowerPoint or video. So I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what's going on at Wings. We have been around since 1985, started by a church group in Schaumburg. And as Bill said, we have grown to encompass the entire Northwest suburbs, North suburbs, as well as now our safe house in the city. So Wings has two safe houses, one out here that Hoffman Estates residents can access and also one in the city on the Southwest side. And so we're the largest domestic violence organization in the state. And we actually stopped using the Women in Need Growing Stronger acronym because we were starting to see much more men seeking our services. So we see, we house on any given night about 250 to 300 people between our emergency and transitional housing program. And then we have community-based counseling programs, including an outreach program at St. Alexis in Hoffman Estates. So if a patient comes in and their injuries are due to domestic violence, they can request assistance from one of our staff and we'll help them get into the shelter or get into the help that they need. And so I know part of what you wanted to talk today about, you know, just how is the pandemic impacting us all? And I think we'll talk about that later. But I know all of us have, doing great work in the community, continued to do that during the pandemic without missing a B and, and taking things virtually. For us at the Rolling Meadows Safe House, we actually had to put everybody into hotel rooms for their health safety. So, you know, it's been a challenging time, but I think, you know, Hoffman Estates can be proud that all of the agencies here continue to provide the same high-quality level of services that we have been doing before and we continue to do since. And in some cases worried about revenue. For those of you who don't know, Wings realized heavily, our big revenue source is our resale stores. And so we had to shut those down for two full months. And, you know, that was a revenue stream that, that we needed. So we've been real creative in, in maintaining our level of services and I'm proud to say that we had to, you know, furlough some of the resale staff during the time they were closed, but we have not let any of our staff go through this whole thing. So with that, I'll let Nancy go ahead and go because I know we're, we're getting a little short on time.
Thank you. Oh, you're muted.
There we go. Sorry. How many times have you said you're muted in the last like five months? I'm constantly saying it on every meeting that we're in. So I'm glad I'm unmuted and I'm going to go quickly too because I know I would really like to get to some of how people are overcoming some of the stuff that's going on now. So Gigi's Playhouse started 17 years ago with our Mr. Mayor at our opening. I opened it with my, after my daughter Gigi was born with Down Syndrome. We now have 50 locations across the country and in Mexico, 10 more opening and we're growing. We have over inquiries to over, open over 200 more worldwide. So our mission is to change the way the world sees Down Syndrome and send a global message of acceptance for all. And we do that by providing free therapeutic and educational programming for individuals with Down Syndrome, their family and the community. It's really important that we educate the community on how amazing our kids are and that they belong in this world. So that's what I love about Gigi's is, is we serve individuals with Down Syndrome, but we give the community a place to serve, a place to learn about love, learn about acceptance, learn about people who have, you know, a different situation than you may have. People whose muscles don't work the same as you do, but they, they try every day so hard to fit in. And it's an amazing place. You know, we have Boy Scouts who walk in to volunteer and they're, they're coming in to get their patches, you know, and they walk in kind of intimidated, but they walk out advocates. They walk out friends. They walk out just warriors for our kids. And that's why it's been so important for me to actually have that place in the community. I think that's a really, really important piece that, you know, we don't just do meetings in a church basement. You know, that kind of implies that's where we belong. We belong in the community. So what we do at our locations is we do free therapeutic and educational programming. So from prenatal diagnosis, meaning when a parent gets that diagnosis, they come in, we help them through the diagnosis. It's shocking. 80% of people terminate. So it's a very scary time. They're coming in, being that smaller percentage of people who choose to keep their child and they're afraid. They don't know what that future is. If 80% of people are terminating, what must that mean their life's going to be like? So this is our time that we talk to them and we don't sugarcoat. We're very real about what's going to happen. They're not going to have the same life they thought, but they're still going to have an amazing life. So we start with prenatal diagnosis and we go all the way through career skills. So right up through adulthood, we give free one-on-one tutoring in literacy and math, free fitness programming, free social skills, speech therapy. Our Gigi Fit Fitness class is just amazing. Our Gigi University, confident you, healthy you, whole you, constantly building that whole individual from the inside out. And what I love about that is that philosophy doesn't just work on our Gigi University students. It works on our volunteers. You know, we build them up from the inside out. Everybody learns when you're at Gigi's and that's what I love about it. Down Syndrome is the largest chromosomal disability in our country and the least funded. There is no programs out there for our kids. Our kids wear this diagnosis on their face every single day and, and... and they need and they deserve respect, and they need to be taught the way that they learn. And that's what we do at Gigi's with over forty different programs. The average age to have a child with Down Syndrome is twenty-eight. So so many of our families are first-time parents. Their friends are having kids. And then you have that child with Down Syndrome, and your child is not doing the same thing your friends are doing, and you're feeling very isolated. So Gigi's is a place of celebration for any of you who have ever walked in or anybody listening. It's a place to walk in and feel instant acceptance, feel instant belonging. We would love for you to bring your kids in. We are still opening unlimited hours right now. But it's a place in the community where we teach acceptance, we teach love, we teach Generation G, which is a conscious decision, be better every single day, be generous, be kind, be accepting of everybody. And I love that it's our kids with Down Syndrome that are leading this fight for acceptance because they are truly the ones who need it the most. They are still the one population that you're still allowed to stereotype with certain words. And it's still okay that you're still allowed to bully, you're still allowed to attack. And there's not the consequences that there are for everything else in this world now. So it's, there's so many amazing things going on. Everything we do at Gigi's is positive and raising people up and empowering people. And we do that with our volunteers, too. So we hope to see people stop in sometime, and now we'll go back to you.
All right. Thank you each of you for all the incredible work that you do. Let's start out with a question. Can you tell us about what your agency has been challenged with during the pandemic and the publicized racial injustices? Shall we start with Carrie?
The huge concern for us was the rate of hotline calls to the child abuse hotline dropped by, I believe it was around fifty-seven percent because seventy-five percent of those hotline calls come in through mandated reporters, teachers typically, daycare workers. So because those kids did not have access to mandated reporters, the hotline calls went down, which means that we, those kids were not on anybody's radar. So by no way, shape, or form do we think that we have solved child abuse in the middle of this global pandemic. These kids just don't have access to be able to reach out to the people to help them. So that has been incredibly challenging, knowing that we have kids in difficult situations. Even in our therapy program, we know that we have, you know, there are kids at our home with offenders. And again, not having access to be able to reach out for help. So that's been pretty troubling. We have a loss of our major fundraiser we could not do because we were in global pandemic. So we lost our gala. We did do a virtual 5K run, which was a big summertime fundraiser that we do. We have anticipated that our casino night that's due in the fall will not go off as well. So this is really, really difficult for small social service agencies. And then in terms of racial justice, you know, we know that these systems are not fairly implemented. Over fifty percent of our services are to the Latinx community, even though they only make up about fifteen percent of the population. So even the disparities just from a systemic level are really apparent where we are. We're just talking about the challenges, not what we're doing with them. Okay, so I'll pause then what we're doing. So those are kind of the big one, you know, and we're trying to support our clients, you know, our clients of color in the therapeutic process who are dealing with all of this political unrest, you know, that's in everyone's face at this time. And they've suffered, you know, lifetimes of this. So doing our best to be able to support them and offer what we can.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah.
Move to Bruce.
Well, much like Carrie was talking about, the big thing obviously is the decline in revenue, which impacts service delivery. I did a data analysis, and we're at a, we had a twenty-eight percent decline of people seeking mental health and substance abuse services. And that includes crisis services, like Carrie was talking about, the children adolescent crisis service. The calls went from, you know, hundreds to, you know, tens and twenties. The kids aren't in school. So, you know, what's going on there? Is there problems in the home? Do the parents not know how to access the SAS services? We had to decrease our bed capacity at the SHARE program by ten percent due to social distancing. And so this is a major loss of revenue for our agency, despite the fact, on the other side, in kind of a bad way, the opiate overdoses are increasing, and there's a rising suicide rate for African-Americans in Cook County. As a matter of fact, they had more suicides up to July of this year as for all of last year. I feel this social isolation due to COVID, along with the stigma of mental illness and addiction, combined with nonstop exposure to bad news on the, all the medias, has impacted people's mental health. The CADC sent out a survey and found that essential workers and young people have been more mentally affected by the pandemic. We've made ourselves more socially active to speak on social media about racism, racial injustice, and hate crimes. You know, we have a, our community in Franklin Park that serves the mental health population, and outpatient is quite a mixture. At the SHARE program, the last time I did a count, we had people from ninety-eight different townships coming in for services. So we, you know, we continue to open our doors to everybody. Everybody embraces the philosophy of anti-racism, and we'll continue to do so. And in parting, I would just want to also say that the timing of this was perfect because September is National Recovery Month for both mental illness and substance abuse. So the timing is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Rebecca.
Yeah, echoing, you know, just the importance for us to take care of our clients. Not only were we trying to keep them safe from the virus, but we were also responding to a huge spike in calls for help. And particularly about three weeks into it, where we really saw it was at the hospitals. More people were ending up in the hospital due to injuries. And police social workers in the area, for many of you don't know, we're fortunate to have social workers who can follow up with different cases. And the social workers were skipping the hotline and calling us, our staff directly, to try to get them into Wings and to the hotel rooms. And, you know, similar to what Carrie was talking about in terms of caring for not only our African-American clients, but our staff who were struggling with everything outside of, you know, working in a domestic violence safe house and working with people who've been through some severe trauma, but also dealing with their own, you know, feelings and what they were going through. So we spent a lot of time on that. Our scariest moment was our Chicago facility. The rioting came within one block of our building, and they easily, with one rock, could have been in the building. We don't have bulletproof glass down there. So we were on pins and needles and actually were ready to put people on buses and in vans and bring them out here to Hoffman and Schaumburg, where we knew we could keep them safe from the rioting. So, and our staff were pretty traumatized because they said it was, you know, driving down the streets that they take to get to that safe house was a war zone. And, you know, just business is completely gutted and worn up. So there was a lot of trauma that our staff went through, and we spent a lot of time, both with managers and mostly on go-to meetings, but really, you know, supporting each other and helping each other through it, so.
Thank you, Rebecca. Nancy.
Yeah, when the day that it hit in March, and I, we had some, we realized that our families weren't going to stop coming in because they need us. And I remember that night, I had two brand-new babies come into the playhouse that day as all this was going on. We didn't know where things were going to go at that time. But I remember that night not being able to sleep, saying, "I have to close because they're going to keep bringing their children, and I don't know how to control this. I don't know how to not get these babies sick." All I kept thinking about was I was holding these brand-new newborn babies. I've been exposed to people all day. And I remember the next day, we called up, and we, all sixty locations and startups, we had to halt all of our programming. So that was in one day, forty-four hundred hours a week. We do forty-four hundred hours a week of free therapeutic and educational programming. We had to halt, and it was devastating. Our families were devastated. These are families that were now at home with a twenty-four-seven diagnosis, not only at home with that, but their kids were now being pulled from schools. That's when kids were coming home from school. They didn't even have any type of support. So within a week, I feel so beyond blessed that our teams, within a week, we built a virtual platform called Gigi's at Home. And within a week, we launched on-demand live and on-demand virtual programming. And we have been doing virtual programming ever since. We have, we actually, we have a lot of COVID silver linings. I mean, we were looking into virtual programming in the future. We're working on an LMS system, an app, and all this stuff. So we weren't ready, but we hadn't had, you know, a little straw man started on all that. But what happened was we were now able to serve people we weren't able to serve before. We are now with Gigi's at Home, serving people in twenty countries. We never even imagined something like that was going to happen. And we've had over twenty thousand people join the Gigi's network since COVID happened. So there's been incredible COVID silver linings, but that's still, we still have to take care of these people. We still have to continue taking care of these people. We had to cancel over sixty Gigi's events network-wide. And, I mean, millions of dollars has been, have been lost. But we've also been able to do some of these events virtually. We've really found the way to pivot, and we're working day and night to continue to serve our families across the country and all these new families that we have. And it's just, it's been, it's been remarkable, really. When we really look at where our families are, what we were able to do to serve them, how many more people we're able to serve during such a crazy time. We continue to call it our COVID silver lining, and we are going to continue to always look for the COVID silver linings because it's all we can do in these times right now. And we did that when it came to everything that went down. It was very confusing for our adults, our teenagers, and our kids to see this rioting and to see, it was on social media, it was on TV, it was in different places. And we've had to create books and learning tools with them in our literacy program and our math and speech, trying to help them understand what's going on in the world. Because when they see, like, they see the police being attacked, Gigi all of a sudden was petrified of policemen. And I didn't even know it was happening. It was happening without me realizing that she was seeing this on social media or hearing it somewhere else. So we've been really, really working through what we can do with the kids and all of it, on all of the, everything that's been going on, the riots, the racial tensions, all of that stuff, and really, really focusing on our mission of Generation G and Acceptance for All. It's the most important message that we can get out to our families to help our families being included. And it's, as I already said, it's been, it's been a tough one. But I feel, I see the COVID silver linings. We're going to have to continue to look for them. And we're going to continue to serve our families like everybody else in the best way that we can.
Thank you, Nancy. And you had started to address my next question, but I'll come back to you again to see if you have anything else to add. And Carrie, we'll start with you. What are you most proud of in terms of how your agency has responded to the pandemic and racial injustice in the community?
So when we went offline, that same experience that you're talking about, how are we going to keep all these families safe, you know? It happened so fast, where all of a sudden it was like, okay, well, we can't be exposing our families to other families that then take this home. So we went to telehealth, except nobody knew how to do telehealth because nobody, nobody got that in school, you know? And we're doing really, really, really hard trauma work, like asking kids to process this really, really hard stuff. So I was very uncomfortable with us being able to do that. So we do what we do and got training on it. Like, how is it appropriate to do this? How do we do this safely? How do we make sure that our kids are okay? Because they still have trauma symptoms, right? So they're still really struggling. And then how do we find that balance? So we took a bunch of trauma treatments. And I got to say, like, there are some very unexpected positive things that did come out of this. We were spending roughly a thousand dollars a month in transportation to get clients to us. But now that we can do this stuff well via telehealth, you know, it doesn't make sense that we would be then incurring that in the future. And some of the kids, kids that had attachment issues, now that they're at home with their caregiver, a lot of that stuff really healed because they had access to that parent. So then we were able to give a lot of parent support about how to support their child through this. But then with our kids that are at home in unsafe situations, in July, we opened the office back up for just those people that it was not safe to do telehealth at home. So I was super proud that the team rallied, you know? And like Rebecca was saying, it's like, these are humans doing this social service work that all have lives of their own, right? So our staff was very concerned about their families, about getting the virus, about spreading it, all of that kind of stuff. So we're in this collective trauma. All of us are in this. And then asking staff to be doing trauma work, additional trauma work to stir this up. But they really, really, really soared and rose to that occasion. And, you know, as social workers, like, we do trauma, okay? We don't share screens. We don't know how to do all this, all of this other stuff, okay? Like, we like to be with the people in the moment and doing that kind of healing work. But we learned. We had, we had all these programs. We didn't even know that we had. So now that we found them on our computer, like, we got up to date. It's HIPAA compliant, Microsoft Teams, you know? And we stayed connected. We were doing daily staff meetings just so staff could stay connected and really process through, this is really, 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 really hard, and how can we show up in the best way for our clients? So that was kind of that unforeseen stuff that had happened. And we, I mean, we had super strong teams going into the pandemic. But again, going through something like this, we're, it looks like we're going to make it. But no one's going to be sad when this comes to an end, that's for sure. So I was really proud with how they were able to rally, and even clients that they're really the warriors in this whole thing, you know, making it another day, showing up for therapy appointments. So that was really great. In terms of the racial injustice stuff that's going on, you know, as social workers in the community, like, that's always front and center for us, you know? But we did examine, are we doing the best job that we can, you know? I think with all of this stuff so front and center, if you're mindful and really wanting to engage in this work, you really have to pause and be like, how am I contributing to this? So we have restarted a cultural humility group where we are asking incredibly hard questions, you know, of staff, all in the spirit of how can we do this best? So we're even doing like really minor changes in terms of making it a more culturally diverse atmosphere, even when you walk in. You know, our walls were decorated very homey-like, you know, with nice child animal pictures, like that kind of stuff. But can we do this intentionally decorate with even welcome signs in different languages, in sign language, you know, so that we're hitting those demographics? So that is going to be an ongoing process. But we are super mindful of it and wanting to do the best that we can with that, so.
Wonderful. Very impressive, Carrie. Thank you. So I'm aware of our time. I just want to say that until seven, we have about twelve minutes. So we'll go through everyone for this question. I'm going to combine the next two questions. And for our audience, if you have questions for the panelists, could you please put them in the chat? And then we'll hopefully get to a few. And if not, then we can figure out how to address some of these questions going forward. So Bruce, what are you most proud of in terms of how your agency has responded to the pandemic and racial injustice in the community?
Well, we were able to pivot pretty quickly to kind of operate on a mental health side. We converted it to telehealth. It was something we were experimenting with before because oftentimes on the mental health side, we work with people that have transportation issues. So we kind of had that figured out. We were able to pivot very quickly and go to telehealth. Didn't lose many of the clients. Actually, we found some of them like to do it virtually. One of the big things that impacted us with the COVID was we had a food pantry that we had to close down, and we had all these people that are dependent on our agency for food. So then what we had to do is we, the staff decided to send gift certificates, twenty-five-dollar gift certificates to all the families, total four thousand dollars a month over the period of months that we've had to do that. We're reopening at the end of this month. The SHARE program, we had to decrease bed capacity, as I said. Jill, the director, put into place, you know, COVID protocol that met with the requirements of the CDC and the Health Department. that uh met with uh the requirements of the CDC and the Health Department. Uh, with social distancing, we have PPP for the clients and the staff. I want to especially give a shout out to any of the share staff that are listening to this and thank you all in the, in uh the administrators and the clinical staff, the people that are working twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five in crisis. Uh, and we we haven't missed a beat and it it's an honor to represent that caliber of a human being.
Wonderful. Thank you, Bruce. Rebecca.
So pretty much the same things that they're saying in terms of taking things virtual was a necessity. And um we found it was the two and three-year-olds who loved it the most, getting to FaceTime their counselor on their mother's phone. But it, you know, it, the the same as the, as everyone else. The staff have just been phenomenal and just to watch them never miss a beat, you know, answering the hotline call, getting someone into the hotel room and then within a week or two, getting them into their own apartment. Um, including a mom with five kids, they helped her find an apartment with some new funding called Rapid Rehousing. And they went and opened up the closed Schaumburg store and let her pick out her furnishings and everything to move into her apartment. And so, you know, just the amazing work that, you know, these staffs all had to pull together to really um keep everything going and, you know, manage their own, own stuff. But they, um, you know, they were caring for for three hundred people through the whole pandemic and moving more people through to their permanent housing um and therefore not back to an abusive situation, which is our primary goal, so.
Thank you, Rebecca. Nancy, did you have anything to add in terms of what you're most proud of?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're ninety-nine percent volunteer-run. So when this happened and we had to go virtual and and we were able to build that platform for them, these were volunteers who had to jump onto a platform while they were still working, still doing everything else, stuck at home with their kids and everything else. And these volunteers didn't quit for our families. I think that that, it speaks volumes for who we are as people and and just, and and just, um, you know, some of them are clinicians. They're not used to doing a one-on-one speech therapy session on on a screen, but they allowed us to teach them how to do it. And they all came forward and stepped up, all these volunteers stepping up to continue to serve our families was something that we're just never going to forget. We're, we're never going to forget that when, you know, things went down, these guys all stood up. And I think that that speaks volumes for the volunteers in this world and and that they're out there to serve and that they're just, it's it's been absolutely amazing to see that.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing. So the next two questions, I'm going to combine and they're really important. I've seen some questions about this in the chat, so I think we're going to address these through my next two questions. So what are the unmet needs of the community that you work with? And how can people of the community, how can our listeners, help your agency and the population you serve? Carrie, let's begin with you.
Really, we need funding to address our waitlist. We've got kids on the waitlist um for about four months now, which is extra long for us. Pandemic did slow things down. Um, and that we had our loss of our um major fundraisers has been really problematic. So there is a donate button on our website at cachelps.org. In terms of what our community needs, we really need um affordable, quality childcare um and housing for for families to keep them in safe situations. Um, we also need, our our clients need access to affordable legal services. Custody battles keep kids in really unsafe situations because whoever has the most money wins. Um, and that's really detrimental to a lot of our um victims of domestic violence. That wreaks havoc on our kids. And then to address these racial disparities, we need um police reform that's able to keep all of our communities safe. Um, we see, we have quite a few asylum seekers. Um, and a huge problem that we're facing with them is um this whole public charge, which keeps them in precarious situations, not addressing their um medical care in the middle of a global pandemic, which keeps the whole community then unsafe, um, as well as serious mental health concern. You know, you're legally able to seek asylum, um, but they're trapped in this, okay, but you can't get any help while you're waiting. So we see that often, which is really problematic. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Bruce?
Um, I've got a list here. We we need to start off with like basic school supplies because we have people that are in the residential program that, uh, you know, are there for, you know, twenty-four, seven, twenty-eight days typically. So I need DVD players, I need seventy-page spiral notebooks, two pocket folders, glue, colored pencils, construction paper, scissors. I need pillows and pillowcases, uh beads and buttons for art projects. I need AA and uh and NA books desperately. So that's something the community could hopefully easily respond to. Then we have our annual virtual fundraiser this year on October second. You can contribute, we have a donate button on our site. I've got a mask here with the uh smile if you want it. And uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Rebecca.
In the interest of time, I'll just refer everybody to our website. We have wish lists there on our website for what our clients need. Um, as well as obviously donating to our stores is an easy thing to do and it helps drive our revenue and our clients all shop there. But all of those things are on our website because I know we are buddying up against our seven o'clock time, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Nancy?
I would say the same thing. There's a wishlist on the website. Volunteers, we could use volunteers. We're doing the one-on-one tutoring in literacy and math um and all of our fitness programs. So we we could use one-on-one, um, we could use volunteers. We do all the training, everything you need to work with this amazing population. So I would say volunteers and any type of iPad or anything else because some of our families can't get to the services that we have. So we've been trying to get any kind of technology that we can so that we can continue to serve them. So, and then everything else will be wishlist. So thank you guys so much for even thinking about um asking about those opportunities. That's wonderful.
Well, I so appreciate that. And that seems to be most of the questions in the chat, if you can speak. About how can I help, uh, what are the most common resources needed? Um, so is there anything, I know that you referred us to the wishlist, Rebecca and Nancy, but is there anything that you didn't say, we still have a couple of minutes, that you'd like for everyone to hear today that in terms of needs?
Well, what I will say is Hoffman Estates is a very generous community, people helping people. And um, you know, Nancy spoke to it, but, I mean, we rely on so so much help, whether it's financial, volunteer, um, or people's things. And I just want to say thank you to Mayor McLeod. He's served on my leadership council for years. I know he's been very supportive to the other agencies and just for even putting this together for us to be able to talk to the the Hoffman community. I'm proud to be a a citizen of this fine village and have such a wonderful mayor as him.
I, I'm going to second that and say again, you know, Hoffman is where Gigi started and it's it's kind of our innovation incubator. What we do in Hoffman, we then scale it to the other sixty locations and startups. So everything that happens here is really helping us change the world. So Mayor, Mayor McLeod, you started this with me, you've been there with us, you've been a huge supporter. I thank you and this entire community because everything we do here, we scale out to the country and we have a lot to be proud of in Hoffman Estates.
Well, we are so grateful for, for all the panelists and the audience for coming tonight. Um, I know at Health and Human Services, we so appreciate collaborating with each of you um at each of your agencies. And so thank you, Mayor, thank you, Jennifer, for setting this up. Thank you to the audience. And thank you so much, Carrie, Bruce, Rebecca and Nancy. It's been such a pleasure and we look forward to continuing to work with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
We'll see you in the trenches.
That's right.
Yeah, we will.
Take care.
All right, take care.